Welcome to... You good?
Here we go.
Welcome to the July 29th meeting of the planning board.
Roll call members. All right, I'll just... Okay, Mr. Abrams.
Present.
We have Miss... Mrs. Simmons-Herling.
Present.
Mr. Costanza. Absent. Mr. Ru... Mr. Rivera.
Present.
Mr. Stimetopoulos.
Present.
Ms. Hoffman.
Present.
And that's it. I think still on a leave of absence is Garrett Sullivan. Absent. Okay. Okay. First order of business this evening is a public hearing with respect to... Excuse me for my... I have all my papers mixed up here. This is a public hearing regarding the ADU language. It just basically is some scribner's errors and just a cleanup of the language. If I can find the amendment. So there are two sections to the amendment. The first section is relative to a scribner's error. Again, Section 1725.030A of Chapter 1725 of the revised ordinance of the City of Revere hereby amended by deleting the words following 760 CMR 71.02. So in the ADU ordinance, this is in relationship to detached ADUs. And it simply says that any... "The language after 760 CMR which read 'In the existing principal dwelling complies with off-street parking requirements.'" Let me read the whole section, A. It relates to off-street parking requirements. A states that "There shall be no additional parking required for an ADU in cases where the ADU is located within a half-mile radius of an MBTA transit station as defined in 760 CMR 71.02." So that's self-explanatory. A train station according to the state's ADU definitions, our bus station refers to a bus stop or bus terminal or MBTA station or transit station. So... And there was further language included in that section that said, "And the existing principal dwelling must comply with the off-street parking requirements." Apparently, an existing principal dwelling under the state law, if it's non-conforming with respect to parking, does not have to meet the parking requirements for that dwelling. So that's one correction. The next section is just simply an error in naming the section. Section 2 states that Section 17.25.040A of Chapter 17.25 of the revised ordinance of the City of Revere hereby amended by deleting Section 17.05.020C and inserting in place the error of Section 17.25.020C. So that was a scribner's error where the correct section was 17.25 and in the ordinance that was amended, that was advertised originally, referred to it as 17.05. So that has to be corrected as a scribner's error. And that's the explanation. I mean, it's fairly simple in terms of cleaning up that aspect of the ordinance. I'll lay it off to you for the hearing.
Thank you. Just a question, please, to the chair, to Frank. So you're saying there's no additional parking, but
Right.
there is still a parking requirement for the main footprint of the house.
We are requiring
So would that be like the grandfather parking? If the house is 60, 70 years old, it would probably be like 1, 1 and 1/2 or whatever it is?
Yeah.
And that would be the requirement even if you add the new ADU?
Correct.
Correct?
You got that right.
Yeah. Okay.
Are there any... Are there any people that'd like to speak on this tonight? Are there any proponents? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Are there any opponents to speak to this tonight? Seeing and hearing none.
Okay, well, that closes the hearing. Next is approval of previous meeting minutes. We open the regular meeting. Do we have a motion to approve previous minutes?
Motion approved.
Second.
Next order of business is the vote on the recommendation to the City Council with respect to the proposed amendments to the ADU ordinance, Section 1 and 2, which corrects scribner's errors in both sections. Do we have a motion?
Yes, a motion.
Motion by the chairperson? Ms. Herlings... Ms. Simmons-Herling?
Yes, please.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Abrams? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Voted so ordered, those sections are corrected. That is it. I know
I have a question that I sent out, kind of like a memo. And it has to do with the berm reventment. And if anyone knows about this, you did a pretty good job with this in the Beauchamp area and other places at Revere, Frank. So I think the question hopefully won't be that hard for you. You've been through this a long time. Apparently, there's going to be a berm in the VFW Bennington Beauchamp School-Fredricks Park area. I'm not sure how far it goes. I only had one plan that showed just the VFW. I'm not sure if it goes down Sales Creek, if it goes into Montville Ave. I'm not sure how far it goes.
Okay.
But I know they're going to have other public hearings for this. And there is a lot of interest in this thing. It's not going to happen tomorrow. It's not going to happen in a year from now. It's going to be a long way out. I think the projected date was probably like 2030. But the groundwork could be leveled or it could be approved. But I was wondering if we could keep... I know that you may have some of these proposed public hearings, whether or not it's in East Boston or whether or not it's at HYM or whether or not it's somewhere else. I wonder if you can keep us abreast of that?
Glad you brought that up because it is an interesting aspect for flood resiliency to protect Bennington Street, the blue line tracks, MBTA blue line tracks, the Beauchamp School, VFW, the pump station, DCR pump station down there. And the plan really starts in Boston. It's a project that is being co-sponsored by Boston and Revere to protect those critical infrastructures. It also protects a number of homes further down on Belle Isle inlet in Revere along Belle Isle Ave, Montfern Ave, and Orchard Street, which is subject to flooding from the Belle Isle inlet. So the major flood pathway coming through Belle Isle is right adjacent to Fredericks Park and also would protect Fredericks Park and the VFW. Comes right over where the pump station is, just a low point. And it proceeds there down Bennington Street. The pass has gone down to Washburn Avenue, flooded areas in front of the Beauchamp School and Fredericks Park and the VFW parking lot. So the plan... And it's also going to protect Suffolk Downs train station. So the plan in Boston and Revere is to elevate Bennington Street six feet from Leverett Ave in Boston down to just before the culvert to the pump station in Revere. So you're going to come down Bennington Street, you're heading north towards Revere Beach. You've got the VFW on your right. Right before the VFW is that culvert which leads to the pump station, the Howard Long Pump Station, which is on the other side. So to prevent water from flooding Bennington Street, which is a major evacuation route for Revere, Winthrop, and East Boston, the preferred plan was to elevate Bennington Street. So to elevate Bennington Street, you'd have to build a berm on the Belle Isle side to elevate it. And on top of the berm would be a multi-purpose walkway bike path. So that would lead to tie into the MBT... MASTIOT's plan for a bike path along Bennington Street further up in Atlantic Ave down to Revere Beach. So that's... One section is to build a berm along Bennington Street on the marsh side and elevate the roadway. Now, how do you protect Fredericks Park, the school, and the VFW and the other residential properties? So the berm would have to proceed and head east right alongside the creek next to the VFW in Fredericks Park, go along the banks where Fredericks Park is, along, all the way down in front of Belle Isle Ave and tie... And across Orchard Street, which comes into the marsh. If you're not familiar with Beauchamp, it's quite a network of homes down there that get flooded quite a bit from Belle Isle inlet. And then the plan is to tie in to high ground well before the Beauchamp Yard Club. If you know, if you're familiar with Pearl Avenue, it's got quite a steep grade down towards the marsh. So we tie into a person's backyard there, right in front of 42... Right behind 42 Orchard Street. So the plan is a berm along Bennington Street, a berm along the VFW, continue the berm along Fredericks Park, and at Belle Isle, because of the homes involved, transition the berm to a seawall. And
Sorry. What kind of seawall?
It would be a sheet pile seawall.
Steel sheathing? Steel sheathing?
Steel sheathing, yeah.
Is that allowed?
Well, we think it is.
Because I hear the state had
The state regulators have an issue with hard infrastructure for flood protection.
I think they use the term organic?
Yeah, they want to seek nature-based solutions, which is like a vegetated berm, which was the original plan along Bennington Street.
Vegetation goes on steel sheathing.
But we run into problems as we reach the VFW and these other homeowners' properties. And the VFW parking lot would be impacted by a berm quite a bit, and they would lose a number of parking spaces. The city involved in this would not want to see the VFW have any financial impact as a result of this project. So what the city is proposing to do is grant the VFW an easement on the Beauchamp School parking lot, grant them a number of parking spaces. So they currently have 72 parking spaces on the VFW site now. We would allow that replacement parking to occur, to boost their parking to 78 spaces. So they would gain spaces. But we're looking at another plan now.
For the Beauchamp School and the VFW, it would be an open easement or for both, for the school, which most of the activity I think at the VFW hell doesn't happen during school hours.
Yeah, well, it's a school property. So the VFW would have an easement, be granted an easement on school property.
Okay.
So they use for parking. Fredericks Park also would be elevated. So that would minimize the height of the berm there, too. So when you elevate the land, your berm isn't as steep, and it just gradually slopes towards the marsh and provides added protection to the Beauchamp School. Now, if we continue the berm east, we have a situation where there's salt marsh that we can't touch, can't go near it. And on top of it, Belle Isle Marsh is an ACEC, which is protected as an area of critical environmental concern. So with the environmental regulators looking at this, we're trying to propose a plan that is sensitive to the environmental impacts but also protects the needs, the flood protection needs of the residents in the city. So we're looking at an alternative measure to replace the berm along the VFW with a seawall, which would minimize the impact to the VFW parking lot. So
Frank, what could a seawall... What could the material of a seawall be constructed from? Concrete or...
Concrete. There would be steel sheathing in front of it
Yeah.
to prevent any erosion, you know, which would be the same as we did down behind down at Rocky Beach in front of that seawall.
Is that up to the state to approve this method?
Yeah. Well, there's another aspect to this. Bennington Street is a state roadway in Revere. MASTIOT has stepped to the plate and decided to fund the design for this project. So it will now be transferred over to MASTIOT as a resiliency, flood resiliency project. So they will be holding public hearings along the way at 25% design, 75% design. So we just did a feasibility study, looked at a number of different alternatives to this project, and the berm was considered the most impactful to protect flooding. So we're even taking it further, and we're going deeper into looking at and asking the environmental regulators if they would accept looking at the feasibility of a seawall and replacement of the berm along the VFW and along residential properties further east. So that's where we are now. And until this all gets sorted out and MASTIOT formally takes over the project, they will be conducting public hearings at that time. And obviously, the City of Revere is a proponent of this, number one, to protect our Beauchamp School, the Fredericks Park, and Bennington Street. And the MBTA is a proponent to protect their blue line tracks.
Frank, I know you said they're going to raise Bennington Street maybe six feet. Are they raising the blue line also?
No.
Blue line stays where it is?
No, that would be protected on...
From the berm?
Because of the west side of the berm.
Okay.
Yeah.
You've already started some of the public hearings. Like, there was a really interesting public hearing held on Pearl Ave and the flooding that they endure all the time. They've started some of the hearings and some of the information sessions. I'm sure that there are a ton to come.
Yeah. Yeah, so we got funding for the MVP program, which is a mass vulnerability program, preparedness program, to look at the lower end of Pearl Ave also, which gets flooded many times. So they're looking at alternatives for that now, which is a different part of this same
Just a question, and I know the study's not out yet, and there's probably still a lot to summarize, but if you put the berm in the areas that we're talking about, like Bennington, down Sales Creek, are you pushing water to the bottom of Pearl Ave? Will that be flooded with a higher degree of benchmark or...
No, I mean, that's a common question asked. You're talking about the Atlantic Ocean, and it's just, it's a drop in the bucket because it'll seek its elevation, whatever it is.
Whatever it is.
You know, you apply that across the entire East Coast, so, you know, it's not like you get more water up inlet and
It's a common question in Winthrop.
More water, you know.
They call it the bathtub effect.
Yeah. I know people have had... Asked questions about dredging Belle Isle, and it's the same thing, wouldn't have any impact at all on the flooding. It would not give you more flood storage, given the size of the ocean. So that's where we're at with that, and it's going to be interesting. As Hal mentioned, it's not going to happen tomorrow. It's going to be, it's probably got like a five to 10-year window at all, if at all. I mean, you're talking about a considerable lot of money here. You're not talking hundreds of million dollars. When you get into raising a roadway the size of Bennington Street and then dealing with all the infrastructure and everything involved, it gets costly.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for keeping us abreast.
Yeah, yeah, it's... Flood protection resiliency is getting more and more a major topic being discussed now, especially with the governor's office. So we're starting to see money pour in towards studies and feasibility studies. We have the same problem with Route 1A in Revere. That's been underwater, you know, a number of times, as you're all aware. And that's a big connection, Cara for North Shore coming to Boston through Revere. That would be a major impact if that, when that roadway is shut down because of flooding, you know, to commuters. So there's a lot of interesting studies that are going to be coming forward.
Thank you very much.
Frank, didn't they want to build a bike lane along Bennington Street? Pardon? I said, didn't they want to build a bike lane along Bennington Street at one point?
Oh, bike lane, yeah. MASTIOT still has that as their plan. And Bennington Street is so wide right now, you never really see two lanes of traffic in both directions. So they want to use some of that width to create a multimodal lane for walking and bicycle. Boston has it now, and they want to continue it through Revere to Revere Beach. Right now, the plan is just bicycle markings on the roadway, not creating a separate bike lane. That's it?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
I will say, in August, the end of August, we will have another public hearing. And, you know, what's come to the plate now, which is another variation of, I guess, energy source, is battery energy. So battery charging stations, I'm talking large battery stations that would house multiple, multiple batteries that would provide energy to the grid. So we created an ordinance, as other towns and cities have, for these uses in the city. And we're looking at only two districts, industrial districts, to allow them, only by special permit.
Is this like the battery stations that are being somewhat near the Abenworth Reservoir? Similar to that?
I'm not sure. I know they're looking at a large one in Everett right now. With Chelsea, Everett and Chelsea are looking at.
Chelsea's just approved one on Eastern Ave.
On Eastern Ave, correct, yeah.
Also, the Davis Company property in Everett, I think they're looking into for, I think their name is Jupiter, and geez, what's the name of it? I know it's Jupiter. That they also, I think they approve in Everett.
So it's another alternative energy source that companies are looking at, and it's getting very popular. So you need to develop strict guidelines to have these occur in the city.
So you... We're thinking in what zones, industrial?
Industrial TED zone, which is along Liberty Bike Highway, and highway business zones, which is behind North Gate, that area. These would be out of the way. We have the Caddy Farms up in North Revere, which is highway business, not near any residential. We already have the transmission lines that go through there.
Is this battery farm or this battery warehouse, is that going to be sold to other companies or schools or MIT or Harvard who need our research? Or is it going to be for Revere use, or is it just open to the grid?
It would be open to the grid to serve the needs of the grid, which would affect Revere. So it would be a good thing for the city. It's a pretty large tax revenue driving use with minimal impacts to neighborhoods, you know. You're talking, we're talking about, one area that we're looking at is Old Trailer Park, which was once looked at for 250 residential units. And so you remove those and you put in an energy source, you know, no impact to traffic or anything else.
Is that industrial use, the old trailer park?
Yeah, it's Zone TED, Technology Enterprise District. Yeah. Yeah. So that'll be coming for the board in the next couple of weeks. I'll send out the agenda, including that amendment. So it'll be like August 28th or 29th, the last Tuesday in August. We'll have our hearing right after the City Council. So there's a lot to be learned, and there'll all be questions, a lot of questions on this. So we have experts in the field that have, you know, guided us on this also.
Getting in pretty early. And we're getting in pretty early.
Yeah.
It's great. Thank you. Do you have more questions?
Right, just a question. Do you know what the size of the battery storage is going to be?
Sorry, my hearing is not the best.
Do you know the size of the battery storage?
The battery storage?
The size, yes.
Yeah. I mean, it could be multiple storage containers that look like trailer containers, or it could be one building, maybe 20 to 30 feet tall. You know, I'm just looking at what the plans would Everett have, which is pretty large.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mostly be like, almost like you have a solar farm. It would be like Sabre Estate, it would be like a battery farm enclosed and with safety protections. And there's extra fire protection, safety because of what they call thermal runaway from these batteries if they explode. Cause an effect that is, that can be contained, that's contained within, so it has to be within a fireproof safe unit. So all those guidelines will be written into the ordinance, to use.
The other, the other ones on the other side of the state, it's by the Quabham Reservoir, is the Oakham, and I never heard of it, Oakham, Massachusetts. And I guess they have a battle going on over there. I think it's, there's signs in front of lawns and everything else, baby carriage parades and everything that they're trying to... There's a lot to this. This is not just a simple storage, or you plug in your Tesla car into something. There's a lot to this.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah. The water just is higher, much higher than a charging station.
All right.
So that's to come.
Thank you. Motion closed?
Motion closed. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting closed.